We have a quorum, we are now called to order. It's a great day in Kershaw County, it's a great day in an all-American county of Kershaw County. It's also parade season and wrestling season starts tonight with Lugoff showing up at Camden. We'll see who gets taught a lesson tonight, Ben. And with that, I will ask Mr. Bozard to do the invocation and the pledge. Would everyone please stand?
Father, pray. Father, we've gathered this day. Do your work, do the work of the county. I just pray, Father, that we will all do the best judgment we've got in making decisions that we can, make the county a better place, let us grow and prosper. At this time, Father, I just pray for all those that are without their families, those that are sick, those that are bleeding, those that just lost loved ones. I pray that you will be with them and let them know that you're still there, always will be there, for them to lean on. In the name of the great and holy name of Jesus Christ.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, ever seen and ever tested.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Bozard. Mr. DeBoz, we come now to public comments. Do we have any people signed up?
Mr. Chairman, two people signed up.
Very good.
The first person to sign up is David Fuller.
All right. American Legion Commander, come forward, please. And I remind you, these comments last about five minutes. This is not a time for question and answer, but merely for the council to be informed. With that, sir, please go right ahead.
First of all, I want to thank the council for letting me come and speak tonight. And I just feel honored to live in a country where we can come and speak and force our opinions on different matters, and so I want to thank you for that. Members of the American Legion Post 17 and our VFW and also Marine Corps League would like to reaffirm our desire to move the 505th monument in front of the Invisza plant to the new Watery Riverside. I think all of y'all, I think all the council managers got the letters that we, that were sent to the council and everything, and so I'd appreciate if you'd read those. There's also a veterans monument at the hospital that we would like to see relocated to this site. That monument needs a proper home, and this park would provide just that. There's also our desire that the council and also with the backing of the people of Kershaw County to name the park Watery River Veterans Park. There's been some controversy about the purchasing of this property and the cost. Also, a park in an area that is prone to flooding from time to time. But let's take this into consideration, that there are several parks in our great country that flood or get several feet of snow. It causes those parks to be closed to visitors for a few days, or even weeks. But there's still parks and people that still visit, there are people that still visit them when the water and snow are gone. There is a lot of military history in that site where the 505th monument is located, as well as the whole county. A lot of people think that when the 505th made their practice jump, that they just landed in the area where the monument is located. But from what I understand, their landing sites were spread far and wide. Some soldiers even landed on this side of the Watery River. I've asked a multitude of people that have lived in this area for years if they knew that what the monument represented in front of the Invisza plant. And they said they thought it was something to do with Invisza, or when the DuPont company was located on that site. Some people said they did not visit the monument because they were not sure if they were permitted to go on that property. I talked to Jeff Riggs at Fort Bragg, and he spoke to the people at 505th Panther Association, and they are in agreement to have monument moved to the new site. The 505th Panther Association, when we have the ceremony at the monument, after each March the 29th of each year, and they celebrate the jump over there, they always come down and they participate in that ceremony. So I ask our council, our legion members and our veterans, hope that you will do the right thing and help us, help get this done, get the monument moved, and have the park named Watery River Veterans Park. Again, I want to thank you all for letting us come tonight, and again, appreciate everything you all do for our county. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you all the legionnaires and veterans here tonight. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. DeBoz?
The second person to sign up is Kim Stokes.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. At your seat, I have placed an invitation, as well as a sheet with some information. Mr. Conell, I did not give you a sheet since you've already contributed, but I did place an invitation at your seat. And Mr. Burns, I apologize, I know you've heard this a couple of times, as well as Mr. Arledge. I would like to personally invite all of our council members to our holiday assembly at Stover Middle School on Friday, December 14th, at 9:00 a.m. in the Stover Gym. Right now, our schools, Stover Middle, as well as Dobie's Mill Elementary and Blaney Elementary, are collecting toys, canned goods, foods, games, et cetera, for families that are in need in the west Watery area. It is a wonderful opportunity for our schools to partner with our community, our parents, our faculty, our staff, our community members, to help these families in need at Christmas time. Currently, we have over 50 families signed up who are in need, and of course, we anticipate more families signing up this week and next week. On Friday, December 14th, at the assembly, we will display all of the collections from all three schools. We have several folks in the community coming to speak. We also have Dr. Robbins, the new superintendent, speaking. And we have invited any of our businesses, community agencies, that have contributed to come and speak and represent their organizations. So again, I just wanted to come and personally invite you. I certainly hope that you will be there. We have several performances also planned. Dobie's Mill Elementary Chorus will perform, Blaney Chorus will perform, our band and chorus will perform. So we certainly hope to see you there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, indeed. I appreciate that. Mr. DeBoz?
That concludes the sign up list.
Okay, very good. We now move to adoption of the agenda, and that concludes the public comments. The agenda is displayed on the screen. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gardner. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, can you explain items one and two?
I will. I was getting to that. Thank you. If you look at the bottom, it says executive session, and item number one is a legal briefing by a bond attorney. Item two is consideration of terms of employment. Item number one, which is a legal briefing by the bond attorney who's here today, thank you, sir, for coming again, will be taken up as an executive session before we get to item three on ordinances, which is the bond itself. I thought we would convene for, dismiss briefly for a discussion with the bond attorney, then come back out, and then have the vote. Helpful?
Thank you.
All right. And then at the normal time for an executive session, we'll get into item number two at the bottom of the page. All right. Any discussion further? Seeing there is none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, Mary. Hi, Lauren. Okay, very good. Move now to approval of minutes dated 13 November at Tab A and also on the screen. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes? It's written.
So move.
Mr. Gardner, a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Conell. Discussion? Seeing there is none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, minutes are approved. We now move to two public presentations. The first one is a Clemson Cooperative Extension with Mr. Ryan Bean. Mr. Carpenter, can you help us introduce that?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, Clemson Extension Agency is an agency the county supports. We provide meeting space as well for them. They're a long, long number of years of providing good service to this county, even though they pull for the wrong football team, they're a great organization. And they've requested the opportunity to come tonight and speak.
Very good. Mr. Bean? Is he here? Apparently didn't show. So with that, we move to the second item. If he comes in later, we'll probably do him the courtesy, maybe interjecting him. The second public presentation is by Sheen Hancock and Godwin Audit Presentation by Mark Wood. Mr. Carpenter, can you introduce that, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, tonight we present to you the audit for the 2017-2018 fiscal year, which ended June 30th of this year. Tonight, we have Mr. Mark Wood, who was the lead auditor, and is here to present his findings and their findings to the council.
Very good. We normally limit these to 15 minutes, but given the significance of an audit, we'll take as long as we need, and encourage any questions from council. Mark, welcome. Go ahead, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight to discuss the audit for this past fiscal year. I think everybody's got an audit summary sitting in front of you, along with your audit report. This is what we're going to go through tonight. At the end, when I get done, if you've got any questions, I'll certainly be happy to answer any and all questions. Before I get started, the county received, once again, an unmodified opinion on your audited financial statements, which is the highest opinion that we can give on a set of those financial statements. So congratulations for that. One and two, I think are pretty self-explanatory. I don't think there's any need to go through that. It's just a breakdown, gives you an outline of your audit report that you have in front of you, and then it just discusses the different types of funds the counties have. So let's kind of go through three, four, and five. And I'll do the general fund, and then I'll come back and we'll talk about the proprietary funds. So if you notice on number one, this is basically your balance sheet for the general fund. Your total assets and deferred outflows of resources were $24.6 million. Total liabilities and deferred inflows were 11.6. So your fund balance at 63018 was a little over $13 million. And four kind of gives you a breakdown of the fund balance. So you can see non-spendable of $13,000, that relates to prepaid items. Restricted is a little over $300,000. Committed for various reasons is 6.8, and your unassigned fund balance is 5.8, almost $5.9 million, okay? Total revenues were 23.5. Your operating expenses for the general fund were 22.4. So your excess of revenues over expenses before transfers was over $1 million. And let, let me kind of emphasize that a little bit. There are several transfers that you're going to see that were budgeted for for capital needs. And so if you look down at the change in fund balance, and it's got a negative $988,000, I don't want y'all to focus on that. I want y'all to focus on the million dollars, because if you didn't have the million dollars, you wouldn't have been able to do the transfers for the capital projects that were done. So I don't want anybody to lose focus that, oh, man, that's not real good. Well, it really is good, and to me, it shows that the general fund is very healthy, and that you were able to do those transfers for those capital projects. All right, proprietary funds. I've just combined them together, but if you want to see the details of the sewer and EMS broken out, they're on pages 20 and 21 of your audit report, so feel free to look at it tonight before you go to bed, some good bedtime reading. Total assets and deferred outflows are 25, a little over 25 million. Your liabilities are a little over 11.2. So your net position or equity for all the proprietary funds is 14.1. That's broken out between invested in capital assets of 13.1, restrictive of $700,000, and your unrestricted fund balance is about $340,000, okay? Once again, total revenues, this is a combination. So total revenues were 5.5, expenditures of 5.8, other is interest on the bond payments of 161,000, and then your transfers and some other financing sources into those funds of 870. So your positive change in net position for all proprietary funds was $380,000. As a little side note, as you will see in your report, the sewer was once again able to pay for their operating expenses once you back out your depreciation, which depreciation is a non-cash expense. I don't consider that to be operating, even though it shows in the report that way because of, that's how it's got to be presented. So I think that's important to note that, that the sewer revenues did pay for the operating If you look at under six, the, this is general fund compared to the budget, and to me, number one and two are pretty significant. Revenues exceeded budget by 152,000, but the expenditures were under budget by 1.7 million. To me, that shows that the county did a very good job of spending, and not overspending. And then transfers were over budget, and so, but anyway, that's not that big of a deal. To me, to me, the positive notes are the expenditures were well under budget, and that was able to fund a lot of those capital projects. I think the county should be very pleased with this audit report. I think it shows that the county is very good financial condition. I would just like to thank Mr. Carpenter, and Sandra, and all her staff, I know they're here tonight. Had a senior moment there for a second. They worked very hard, guys, and we, we come in for, I guess we're here probably two weeks, and we demand a lot of their time. We demand a lot of information, we ask a lot of questions, but they were super great to work with. Actually, you'll notice in your audit report, there are no audit findings this year. Sandra, your finance director, was able to write a good bit of the report this year. So this is the first year that I've presented that there are no findings in the report. And so I just want to thank them personally, because the more that they're able to help us, and the more willing we can get work out of them, the better we can come in and do our job, and get out, and they can get back to things that are more important, that the county needs them to do. So I just want to thank them for that. And with that, I'll open any questions that anybody might have.
Opening comments, please. I had a couple, Mark. You said a lot of activity with capital projects enabled by cash on hand, so cash flow management was a, was a big issue. Can you just speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, I think it shows by your expenditures being under budget, that, you know, that you're going to have times that the cash flow is tight, like right now, until property taxes start coming in next month. And so your cash flow issues are from usually May, June, until about the end of November. And so it's very important that the county council, administration, finance understands that, and you budget properly to weather those storms, and that you have enough in reserves that you can weather that until your main revenue source, which is your property taxes, start rolling in in December, January, February, March, to kind of continue the track. And so I think it, I think this shows that the county has done that, and it continues to do that. Your unassigned fund balance for the general fund of the 5.8 is almost about four months in reserve, and the rule of thumb is between three to six months of operations. So the county has, has got a good fund balance reserve, which means you're able to weather some of those cash flow management potential issues.
Other comments? I would say that we also put into a place, a vote of this council, that we would have such a policy that we didn't have before. Can you talk about that?
Yeah, there is a fund balance policy, and it's disclosed in the, in the report this year, of what the minimum fund balance is going to be based on, and if it falls below what the, what council and the county is going to do to remedy that over, I think, a three-year period, to try to get that back to where it's supposed to be. And I think that's important. I think it's, it shows that you're, you know, committed to saying, hey, guys, we've got to at least keep some reserves, or enough reserves, that in case something happens, we can weather the storm. You don't want to have, you don't want to get to the point where you've only got a month of reserves, and something happens, and you're having to issue tax anticipation notes to make payroll. And I've seen places that had to do that, and it's, it's not fun to get out of that cycle if you have to. And it's, we're nowhere near that, and so I think that's, that's good.
Very good. Mr. Jones?
But Mark, being straightforward, we've never been in that situation, have we?
No, not since I've been here, no.
Not since I've been here either, and I've been on both sides of the fence. I've been a department head, a county employee, dealing with you guys during audit time, and y'all do a remarkable job, and you're going to call it as you see it, but to be fair about fund balance, we've never jeopardized our fund balance.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
I have a question.
Yeah, please.
Hey, Mark. Just wondering if you could speak holistically about how the unmodified opinion makes us more attractive in the marketplace when it comes to anything financial, bonds, bolt purchases, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I mean, it, when you have an unmodified opinion, basically what that means is, we, we didn't run into any issues that we had a modifier opinion. If we got in a situation where we couldn't audit something because the records weren't good, you can get in a situation where you could have a modified opinion, you could even have an adverse opinion. And when you get into that, not only do you run, could run potential problems with your bonding rate agencies, the ability to issue bonds, but the state also negatively reflects on that too, and they could start putting some restrictions on you guys as well. And so that's very important to continue to have an unmodified opinion.
Thank you.
Mr. Bozard?
Yes, please. Maybe you and Mr. Carpenter, how does this rating we got affect our credit score?
Can you repeat that one more time?
How does this budget, right now, the way you present it, affect our credit score? Our credit rating?
Currently, we're essentially double A, which is about the highest a county our size can receive. When we go out for bond review, one of the first things they do is, is they look at our basic financial condition, they look at any negative issues that are out there financially or legally that could affect what they determine our bond rating is going to be. So this is one of the fundamental things they use in determining your, your bond rating is, is your audits. We have to send copies to all the rating agencies every year, they review it, they call us then, and we generally have to sit through a question and answer period where they ask questions about what they see in our audit. And so it's a, it's a significant part of the whole process of coming up with the credit rating the county has, and it's an annual process where they review us.
So what, what you're saying is, we do not have a problem?
Yes, sir, not from this.
That's good, thank you.
Yeah, good. Other? Yeah, Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say thank you to Mr. Carpenter, and Ms. Brown and her staff. I know that Mark has already done it, and thank you, and Sheen Hancock and Godwin too, for doing such a superb job in this audit. But I, I know, as Mr. Jones stated, that we've never had any problems, but it doesn't take long to get into problems, especially a county our size, and, you know, we don't have revenues of Richland, Greenville, Charleston to recover quickly. So we want to make sure that we're physically, you know, conservative and responsible, and we always have been, since I've been sitting up here and even before, but that doesn't stop us from having a vision to, to continue down that road and still do good things.
That's right.
So thank you to all of you, and we'll look to see you next year.
Thank you.
Others?
One more comment.
It's her.
Yes, I forgot to say thank you all to you and to our staff for the job they're doing, and keep us out of trouble. Thank you.
I just want to know, where's the other half of the audit? Because this is the thinnest one I have ever seen in eight years, so.
We've gone and now copied on, on two sides, so we, we've condensed it down a little bit, trying to slay some trees.
Of course, they need a job.
That's the thinnest one I've ever seen.
Mark, if you don't mind if I drop by and have a tutorial with you?
That's fine.
Particularly interested in Gatsby and that sort of stuff. And I'll, and I'll take a week or two, and we won't do it on Christmas Eve.
There you go.
Other comments? Again, thanks to Sandra, well done, and all the team, huh? Well done. Terrific. Oh, you got something?
Just really keeping what you were just saying, Mr. Chairman, before I got here, we had, I think, as many as six pages at one point of findings in our audit, and we're down to no pages and no findings at all. And that's a direct testimony to current staffs, previous staffs, that have worked for years to get us to a position where you can't get any better than no findings. And so I want to publicly thank Sandra and the staff for the work you've done, because you have made a difference in our ability to, to communicate to people who need to know, and it's because of y'all, so I just want to share that with council and the public.
Good. Sammy, this is not a reason to go and spin like a drunken sailor.
Well, everybody figured, because I'm the only Democrat up here, I'm the only one that knows how to spin.
All right, well, thank you very much, Mark. Have a blessed day.
Thank you.
I'll get on your calendar. Thank you. We move now to the next item on the agenda, which is a proclamation recognizing the 20th anniversary of the Community Medical Clinic. That's amazing. And it's on the screen, and I have the proclamation in front of me, I'm going to read it, and then we'll vote on it. Honoring and recognizing the Community Medical Clinic of Kershaw County on occasion of their 20th anniversary, whereas the Community Medical Clinic was founded in November 30th, 1998, gosh, with a mission to provide primary care to the uninsured at no cost to their patients. Today, they continue to provide direct services at no cost, and they're also currently leading the charge to make Kershaw County the healthiest county in, in South Carolina, let's say, in the United States of America. Whereas the Community Medical Clinic offers primary care, dental, vision, mental health care, they are one of the three free medical clinics operating at school-based health center in the United States.
There you go.
They operate at North Central High School, offering medical care for 859 students. The clinic also has transitional care, which reduces the percentage of uninsured patients being readmitted to Kershaw Health. Whereas, the Community Medical Clinic collaborates with healthy people, healthy Carolinas, to fund quotation "live well, Kershaw County," end quote, which leverages equity and quality improvement. Vision 2030 is a key component of the clinic's mission, and led to population health being at the forefront of the county's vision plan. Now, therefore, let it be known that the county council of Kershaw County, South Carolina, commends, recognizes, and celebrates the 20th year anniversary of the Community Medical Clinic of Kershaw County's presence in the county, and appreciates its great aptitude of partnership through which it has participated in activities which have improved the lives of countless numbers of our citizens, and offers its fervent best wishes for the continued success over the next 20 years of operation and well into the future. With that, can we have a vote, a motion to approve?
Someone, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Bozard, a discussion. Mr. Tucker?
Yes, sir. I love the proclamation. I think we left one thing out, and that was their vital role in being an all-AAC, all-American city, because they were definitely a vital role, but other than that, I say congratulations to you guys for your 20 years of service to our citizens.
Thank you. Other comments?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Jones?
I have a problem with a lot of free medical clinics that are around South Carolina, and I have some issues with them, their spending, but I'm going to say this. Our Community Medical Clinic is a living example of what the others should be like. You guys do a great job, you're transparent. I've toured the facility, I see what you do, I see how you help people, and I'm going out on a limb by saying, I appreciate what you guys do, just don't mess up down the road. Bottom line is, you guys do an outstanding job, and I think others should follow. And I think others should follow suit. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, the comments? Uh, there's not enough time in the day for me to say what I want to say about CMC. Uh, and the way they fit into Vision 2030 and way they were a driving force. In Vision 2030. Um, and along with Alpha Center who's winning national prizes, international prizes. And the other care that we are providing through our school system. Uh, Food for the Soul and others is really pushing our county. Into a new vision of what constitutes health. And I just can't say enough nice about your team, Susan, and they're here today. Uh, can I ask you to come up and, uh, after I make the vote and we'll have you introduce everybody. I know you will be shy about saying something. Uh, any further discussion?
I have a question.
Uh, yes, sir.
April, did you, did they bring you with them? It even gets better.
All right, with that, I move, we motion to make, uh, the vote and, uh, all those in favor, so signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous and, and it's passed. With that, I'd like to have you all come up and, and we'll do a photo op. Can you come up?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, Terrell Nelson is our current chair of our board, but. Terrell and I were together 20 years ago when we started this, so.
We were just 12.
Yes.
Yes, and, um, I'm excited. You already, um, recognized April Walk, who's one of our newest board members. Um, we're real smart about getting good people, Jimmy, on our, on our board. And, um, I've got, uh. Sherry Bates, who's with our Access, um, Health and Susan Dodato, Catherine Johnson, Holly and, um, Carrie Boyce. Those are folks that are here today. And when we leave, we're going to a board meeting. Which we will have our audit results as well with no findings. So I'm happy about that. I was happy for y'all, but, um, I want to say thank you so much for this recognition. It truly means a lot. Um. You all were there from, with us from the very beginning and the building that we now are in. Is because of this county council being able to say, yes, we'll go forward with a CDBG grant. So we were able to move from a 900 square foot. Facility in the United Way Building to the 4,000 square foot building that opened up in March 13th of 2006. And we couldn't have done that without the cooperation of this county. And then, um, the city planner and all the council members that were here. So, um. To think that we've been in that building that long too, and it's holding up really well. So, um, Terrell, do you have anything to say as a board chair?
Thank you. On behalf of the, um, board as well, um, other folks could not attend, um, today, but on behalf of our awesome board that we, um, have and also the. Fabulous staff, um, I want to give a shout out also to Susan Wachowski because we wouldn't be here 20 years later. Had it not been for her and what she's doing, you know, to continue to grow. Um, throughout the whole community as well. So we've got lots of work to do for the next 20 years and thank you again to all of you. Thank you, everybody.
And Danny, can you make sure that Jim Tatum gets a copy of that proclamation? I'm sure he'll want to write about that. Wake up, Jim. All right. Thank you, everyone. We move now to a series of ordinances. We have three. Uh, the first is a second reading of an ordinance by Kershaw County Council redesignating. The Alpha Center Behavioral Health Center as our designated alcohol and drug abuse counseling therapy. Agency repealing a prior inconsistent ordinance. It's at tab C and I think you can have it on the screen too. Vic, can you introduce this, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, uh, it was a determination that the existing ordinance needed to be changed. Um, this, uh, change presented to council with the full vetting and approval of the Alpha Center. As well as county's counsel, Mr. DeBose, and it's presented to council, uh, on second reading, first reading, it passed unanimously.
Very good. And we have a motion to approve it on second reading.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Tucker, a second, uh, motion, please.
Second.
From Mr. Arledge. Very good. Any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I will recuse myself and I will al, also abstain from voting. It's probably redundant. But anyway, uh, I won't be involved in the discussion nor will I be involved in the vote.
Very good.
But I will sit right here.
And we'll tell your wife all about it, Jimmy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Other discussion?
You promised not to raise your hand this time?
Okay, no discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah, Mr. Conell, go right ahead.
Vic, I was wondering, what's the annual, uh, budget amount that we allot to the Alpha?
The Alpha Center receives about $5,000 a year as a direct appropriation and then pass through about, I think, 120,000. A year through the, uh, um, mini-bottle pass-through funds through, um, the aid to governments and the state government.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and on that basis, uh, Mr. Napper has very graciously offered every year as a part of this ordinance to come in and tell us how's it going down that way when he has his audits. So that'd be very helpful to us too. Thank you, Paul. Uh, other comments? Okay, seeing there are none, we move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it passes unanimously with Mr. Jones abstaining, recused, uh, not voting. And, uh, and it moves to a third reading. Thank you very much for that. We move now to a second item. Which is the second reading of an ordinance to authorize the execution of the amended and restated, uh. Intergovernmental agreement to use and, uh, the use, excuse me, in maintenance of the CCTC facility. It's at tab D. It's rather short and, uh. And it's on the screen. With that, Vic, would you introduce it, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have before you tonight for second reading. Uh, a restating of an ordinance of a, um, intergovernmental agreement actually between the college and the county. Um, the, uh, driver for this is the desire of the Chamber of Commerce and the college to, um, work together, allowing the Chamber of Commerce to move out. To the, um, campus site and take, uh, the space that was, um, made available when economic development moved to the next building. Uh, the current ordinance, um, limits them only to educational uses. Uh, this will allow them to, um, uh, bring in more than just educational uses, but as always with the final approval of Kershaw County Council.
Very good. Can we have a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second, then.
Second from Mr. Conell, uh, discussion? Okay, very straightforward. We'll move into a vote. All those in fa, in favor signify by raising your hand. And it passes unanimously. The next item. Is a second reading of an ordinance, item number three. Providing for the issuance and sale of not exceeding $6,500,000. Aggregate principal amount of general obligation funds and bonds at tab E. It's rather lengthy. Uh, we have our bond attorney here. Uh, Mr. Carpenter, would you introduce it?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have tonight for second reading. A bond ordinance, uh, the purpose of the bond ordinance is to, um, generate not exceeding $6.5 million for the purpose of. Uh, upgrading and, um, reworking the county sewer system, uh, transfer lines.
Very good. It was proposed that we go into an executive session to have the full. Dimensions of what we have before us. Uh, with that, I would entertain a motion for, uh, uh, an executive session. Uh, to return and conduct a vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a, a motion to go into executive session for legal briefing of the bond attorney. With anticipating on a vote afterwards.
Uh, can we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Bozard, discussion? Uh, just for clarification, we need the bond attorney. I think we need, uh, your attorney, Vic, and yourself. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, very good. Uh, this could be lengthy for those of you who are here tonight. And, or it could be short, we'll see, but it's certainly important and we're not going to rush it. So. When we return, we will return for a vote, a motion for a vote. Uh, now it's now vote, it does now vote on that motion. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous and we are in executive session.
Motion to come out of executive session?
I'll take a motion to come out of executive session. Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Conell, any discussion? Seeing there is none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And we are now returned from executive session. Uh, with that, now we move back to where we were with the item on the reading on the bond, item number three, tab E, up on the. Board. Can we have a motion to approve on second reading the ordinance?
So may.
Uh, uh, Mr. Conell first and Mr. Bozard second. Any discussion on second reading? All right, very good. Let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, it passes. We move now to new business. Item number one is a Kershaw County Council meeting schedule for next year. Uh, it's at tab F and also on your, uh, screen in front of you. Uh, Mr. Carpenter, would you introduce this, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, every year, council sets the, um, schedule for county holidays for the upcoming year. Um, you have in front of you the, um, holidays that are currently listed in our, um, handbook and county, county rules. And it's, uh, in front of you tonight for, uh, review, discussion and, uh, approval.
Very good. Can we have a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Conell, uh, discussion?
Actually, I'm, this is the regular meeting schedule, not the holiday schedule. I'm sorry.
Yeah, exactly. Um, um. Discussion, Mr. Gardner?
Yeah, as I did last year, I would, uh. Recommend that we only have one meeting in July, August and September because I think the facts will show you, we had like. One item on the agenda for those meetings. And we could have the second meeting each of those months and let everything accrue. And we can always call a meeting if we have to, but we, I personally don't think that we have the need. For two meetings in those months. We're not. Required by law to have two a month. I understand that. Some of you want to be here for our constituents. Well, you're still as close as your phone or whatever, so. Uh, I, I just think that we, we ask staff to stay here for two and a half, three hours. On those days that we come in here and, and we have a, you know, 30 or 45 minute hour meeting and yet they have to stay three to four hours extra and. I just don't think we have enough on there. So, again. I would ask for your consideration on. Uh, looking at, at the July 9th, August 13th and September 10th meetings, take those off the schedule.
You want to continue this in discussion or you want to make a motion?
Uh, just, just discussion at this point.
Mr. Jones?
If I could. I don't know that it's a point of order, but I, I have a question for Mr. DeBose. Isn't this a little premature? Don't we normally take this up in January after the new council is elected on the first meeting?
Well, it says, actually, I think the Home Rule Act, we've always done this time of year and it's basically never changed. The Home Rule Act says that, uh, at the beginning of the year, you will have a schedule. I don't have it in front of me right now. I believe that's what it is.
But that's what we've always done.
Well, the problem, of course, is you've got to schedule the one in January.
Sure.
So you've got to schedule one of them now. Um, this is traditionally, Mr. Jones' counsel has set the schedule in, um, in, in the year before, but it's never changed. So it kind of becomes a moot point.
Okay.
It's always been the second, fourth, Tuesday at 5:30 since 1997.
Other discussion? Okay, I did not hear a change to mo, uh, amendment to that motion. Uh, moving to a vote, all those in favor signify.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize.
Go right ahead, please.
Listen, so basically the meetings are going to stay just as they are now. There's no change.
That's the motion we have, yes, sir.
I'll, I'll, I'll put that in form of a motion. I'd move that.
Amendment.
To amend the schedule. And take out the meetings on July 9th, August 13th and September 10th.
Is there a second? Uh, there is no second. Uh, further discussion? I'll just say we ought to cancel a meeting if we don't have anything to talk about. And we can do that in advance.
I agree with that.
Okay. Uh, that's understood and we ought to be aggressive about it. Maybe. In my, my next year, I can achieve that, Tom. I told you I tried to do it last year. All right. O, other comments? Okay, I, I suggest we move to a vote. All those in favor of the amended schedule. Uh, for next year, 2019, signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous and nearly so. Thank you, and it passes. And we move now to the next item. Uh, which is item number two, a motion to change the terms and restrictions on the use. Of $250,000 of capital funds appropriated in the budget. For the Alpha Center to, and to restate, restate the restrictions. It's at tab G. Uh, is that on the screen?
That was the motion from the June meeting.
Yeah, that's extraction from, uh, the budget meeting we had in June. I think Mr. Tucker would introduce this. Do you want to make a motion, Mr. Tucker?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, at this time, um, I think I spoke to you guys, um. Last meeting that I'll be putting this on the agenda. I'd like to make a motion to change the terms and restrictions to use of $250,000 of capital funds. Appropriated in the budget for the Alpha Center. To reinstate the restrictions to read that the funds must be used by the Alpha Center for new capital improvements. And the county funds must be used. Um, from, I'm sorry, the Alpha Center must, the new capital improvements from the county funds, it must be used on. Capital improvements within a 24-month period beginning July 1 of 2018.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Tucker, you said you want to reinstate the motion. I think you meant restate the motion?
Restate, yes, sir.
I think you want to reinstate the motion.
Okay, so.
Thank you. It is restate. R-E-S-T-A-T-E.
So essentially, the motion that reads would read, uh. Read that again, please. Now that he's confused me on that.
All right, I'd like to move to change the terms and restrictions on the use of $250,000 of capital funds appropriated in the budget. For the Alpha Center and to re, restate the restrictions to read that the funds must be used by the Alpha Center for new capital improvements. And that the county funds must be used for capital improvements within a 24-month period beginning July 1 of 2018.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gardner. Uh, discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I will recuse from any discussion. I will recuse, abstain from any vote. Due to the fact that my wife is the executive director of the Alpha Center with Mr. Paul, um, no, I mean the deputy director with the executive director. I just lost it for you, but anyway. Just wanted to make that clear.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Tucker, you want to lead the discussion?
Yes, sir. Um. I would just like to say that, um, we're not appropriating any new money. Or changing the budget or line item. This is funds that we have already voted on when we took our third reading in June. So it does not change, um, anything in our budget from as far as the amount, decrease, increase. Um, just removing the restrictions because Mr. Napper, who is here and, uh, of course, Ms. Jones and Ms. Margaret. We, we thank you for any questions that you may have. Um, their needs have changed and, um, I respect that and I've talked to them in detail. And what those changes are and that's what I hear tonight. If you have any questions to have further discussion. But, um, not only that, um, we've placed some restrictions and requirements on them that we've done no other, um. Any entity or nonprofit organization in the history of me sitting here and I. Don't feel that it's been, um. Done fairly.
Um, all right, Mr. Bozard?
Yes. Mr. Tucker?
Yes, sir.
You said July of 18?
Yes, sir. That's when the, the clock started, which would be of this much.
I'd like to see us change that to January 19. Their, their situation changed, so we need to give them a little. need to give them a little leeway, make sure they've got the time.
Does it, is it a problem? I mean, Mr. Napper?
You're good with the July of eighteen? Oh, shut up.
All right. Other discussion?
I have some questions.
Mr. Conell?
So this is the first I've heard of it, other than you talking about the meeting at the prior meeting, but this is the first I've seen of some of the details. And obviously, it was the will of council last time to allot these funds. I voted against that because I just couldn't understand the arithmetic and the formula for how this would be a successful project. So in light of that, I do have just a couple of questions. I see the two things that were removed from the prior motion that was approved by council was sale of an existing or present building and successful completion of a fundraising drive before the allotment of county funds. So I'm just trying to understand, why were those two items removed?
Those two, that's the problem that we've had. He's not selling his property. He's going to build on site. It's going to be new construction, but it's going to be on site. They've had a chance, and we don't have his plans before us because he has not gotten them completed, nor have they been presented to his board before coming up for approval, which he has ensured me and others that he will be doing as soon as he gets that process done, and it should be completed by next month. The, so the selling of the building is not even of question now because they're going to utilize that facility, plus build new facility at the existing site. Now, the selling of the property on Aaron Claw is what's going to happen to help fund the changes that he's made.
I remember in the last proposal, we had a lot more detail. I mean, there's actually a formula saying, how do we make this a successful, make this a successful project, and one of those pieces was the sale of the building. So are we, are you saying now that we would allot $250,000 of county funds without another dollar being raised by anyone else? And I know there was state funds that have already been received, but would we allot those funds before anything else has been raised?
Yes, sir. State funds has not only been approved, I think they're in the process of receiving those, and the cities in kind as well, they're committed, and that did not come from just Mr. Napper. That also came from the mayor, who I spent last weekend with at a conference. So I'm having a little bit of heartache on us requiring so much out of the Alpha Center, which actually helps people, but we're, we don't have any issues or problems giving other entities, you know, Humane Society, Equine, Historic Camden, Chamber of Commerce, I mean, the list goes on, and these amounts of monies or less, and some of them have been more, and not have such restrictions. And so that's, I'm really, really struggling with that, Mr. Conell. And so that's part of the reasons for removing these, because, once again, I don't think we've been fair to them on trying to help facilitate new funds. We're sitting here in a second reading of redefining what they are, but yet we're not willing to help. I don't see how that works or how that enhances their vision, and I think that's what we're here to do, as the designated resource place for Kershaw County for substance abuse, child abuse, whatever problems you may have, addictions, these mental problems that we're having in the county, they're addressing that as well. I just, I'm really, really troubled with what we did in the budget, and that's why I'm revising this tonight. And I'm not the only one up here that has those issues or feelings. I'm just right now the only one speaking.
Go ahead. Mr. Conell didn't get an answer to his question. Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, so how many other entities have we given $250,000 to that are private, non-county controlled?
Non-county controlled, we did the Fine Arts Center, I believe, for their building and the Equine Center for their structure. The Equine Center is arguably county influence, if not control, because we own the land. But the Fine Arts Center, several years ago, we did from ATAX funds, a large capital for their capital campaign for their building.
And do you recall, were there any strings attached to either of those contributions?
I'd have to check, but I don't recall that there were any.
On the Equine Center, they have to report to us every year. We get oversight, that sense.
Mr. Napper reports to us as well every year. You just said it in the audit when we just went through. And then not only that, what was the dollar amount for the land that we approve up of Flat Rock?
You're talking about the pass-through? That was, those were funds that were passed through.
Pass-through, okay.
So there were no county funds. We just wrote the check.
Yes, sir. And then what was the Humane Society's amount? Because that was over $200,000. Not to say that they're not deserving when they were building their new building down there.
Well, we do have a level of oversight with them because they provide a service for the county, so they contract with us. So we have a contractual relationship with them to run as an animal shelter, so we don't have to run one.
Well, this resolution that we're getting into is a contract with the Alpha Center.
I'm not saying about the Humane Society. I'm not arguing with you. I'm just saying.
But I want to compare apples to apples, and that's why I'm not, I'm not understanding, and I'm not in agreeance with tonight.
Mr. Conell, you still have the floor.
Sure. Well, if I'd been present for those prior large amounts that were given in the past, I would hope that I would require the same level of scrutiny that I'm suggesting right now. For me, I'd, just like the prior instance of the vote, I totally support the Alpha Center. I hope you all know that very much, and I congratulate you on the awards you've received. But if I'm going to say we should put $250,000 towards a particular project, I don't understand how it will be successful. And here, I have even less detail before me than the last vote. So for that reason, I wouldn't be able to support it.
I thank you.
Other than discussion? Mr. Bozard?
Yes, I support Mr. Tucker. I agree with him wholeheartedly. If we're going to put restrictions on, put them on everybody. I take them off, and that's what my stance is. Thank you.
Other discussion? Mr. Arledge?
Mr. Tucker, you're saying they have received the state money? That's correct?
They're in the process of receiving, but it's been awarded through the budget, and they're doing the paperwork to get those funds in. And I'm going to let you ask your next question, but that's something that really bothers me as well. It's pretty ironic, we're sitting here giving way less money than the state, but yet we act like those aren't public funds. They're ours. They're our public funds from where we pay state taxes. The city, for the ones that live in the city, that's taxed through municipalities. Those are our funds too, and yet we're sitting up here with a lot of heartburn needing A to Z detail on every little thing that the Alpha Center is doing, which is doing great work. They've been transparent. They're coming back before you. It's more of, can I hold them hostage is the way I see this. And I don't, I just, I don't think that's fair. There's never been another organization that you've done this way.
If I may continue?
Go ahead, Mr. Arledge.
Okay. Again, I'm not trying to hold them hostage. I'm looking at the prior motion when we approved that money for them before, and I have not had any kind of one-on-one or any kind of documentation provided to me that shows what the new construction costs are going to be. Is it adding on to the current building? Is it a separate building? I don't, I'm like Mr. Conell. I mean, I fully support, I voted for it before. I'm just kind of at a loss on what the new direction is, and that hadn't been provided to me.
Okay. Other comments?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tucker?
Well, I have talked to you and given you as much detail as I have. I don't have any drawings. Mr. Napper's been available as well. He's here tonight. If you guys were wanting questions to ask, he is willing to come up, he and his staff. That's why they came tonight. Other than that, they wouldn't be here. But I did ask him to come because if they had questions on whether, that they needed to answer, then they could be here speaking for themselves. So feel free to call them up if you want to ask them about those things, but I gave you as much information throughout conversations as I had.
That's correct.
You got as much as I got.
But I don't know what their overall cost is going to be. Do they have a ballpark figure on the overall cost?
Well, let's, all would you submit to come up, or you want to, yeah, come on up. Why don't you pose your question to him, Dennis?
Thank you.
And thank you for coming to answer the question. My question, first question would be, do you have a rough estimate on what the overall cost will be, and maybe a little bit of detail on what that construction's going to actually entail?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Arledge. You have to excuse me, I have a ear infection, got a little vertigo and can't hardly hear, but besides that, I'm doing fine. And our audit was great too, by the way. Everybody else bragging on theirs. We had an unqualified audit. Basically, the change is, Mr. Arledge, we found out that if we utilize our old building for administration only, then we can build a new facility that is about 40% less than what we had projected with the new facility and administration and everything. Taking that into consideration, we have three acres, a little over three acres where we are now, plenty of room. We will build a new facility right beside the old facility, state-of-the-art treatment facility, just like we said. We will cut off the large conference rooms, we will cut off the kitchens, we will cut off all of that. It will cost us about approximately 40% less than our original projections.
And your original projection was?
Three million.
Three million.
Yes, sir. And we're just trying to be good stewards. Matter of fact, I talked to the chairman, and he had already come up with some of those suggestions about the large conference room and the kitchen, and I assured him that we were thinking on the same lines of reducing the cost as much as possible.
And you think the timeframe from July, two years, will be sufficient?
Yes, sir, I do. And to calm some nerves up here, we already have a bank that would loan us the entire cost, have asked us to please borrow the money from them, and we just can't jeopardize ourselves by doing that. So, you know, where I come from, a man's as good as his word, and I'm giving you my word, this building will be built.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Ms.?
I have a few. Let me take it up.
Go right ahead.
You base your cost estimate is what now going to be? What's the new cost estimate?
We're looking from 170 to 180.
1.8 on the top end. But you don't have an architectural design like you did on the other document?
No, sir.
So how do you, how did you come up with your cost figures?
By taking about 40% off the old building. The things that were taken out were costly things. The building that we're going to build will not have the fluff, it won't have the, it will be a nice, functional, good-looking building, but it will not have the architect put in a water fountain in the front of the building. We didn't ask him to, but he did. All that kind of stuff we've taken out. We tried to be good stewards of your money.
When would you have an architectural design ready?
The architects are actually coming in the 12th of December, and it's up to them then. But we've contacted them, but because of the season, they're running behind. But I think our date is December 12th when they'll be in. They already have the basic building. They're just going to cut it down.
Okay. There was an issue that you and I discussed, and I'll just go right through them. The fundraising?
Yes, sir.
How much fundraising are you looking to do?
We don't know, but from our article in the Camden Chronicle, we've already received a $5,000 donation.
Yeah.
We are, I have a letter on my desk for the fundraiser to start, and we'll probably be sending that out next week.
Okay. And then you have the city of Camden in kind. Their in kind was not cash on the Aaron Claw facility, and what would be an in kind now when they're already providing water, sewer, and electricity at the current location?
The in kind would be they made that property very more valuable.
But that doesn't translate to cash for you.
Yes, sir, because we're going to sell that property.
And the city is going to go ahead and put in electricity, sewer, and water?
Yes, I understand they have. Now, that's what Councilman Graham told me.
Yeah. I'd look for Camden to do a little bit more than what they're doing here for this.
Well, we asked them for 50, and if we'd have had to pay them, it would have cost 90.
Yeah. But now they're not having to do it at all, is my point. I mean, the in kind donation from Camden no longer exists in this model.
No, sir, you misunderstood me. From my information, they have done it.
Okay. And then the sale of Aaron Claw is going to net you how many dollars?
I don't know. We have 150,000 in it. We certainly would raise more than that.
Okay.
Especially with the bypass coming through and it being one of the very, very few pieces of property left, and a large housing development going to be developed right in front of it, the price of that property should go up considerably.
Yeah, I can see that. And is there a zoning issue because the available land, you know, we know when we come, your meeting's there every month at your place, we park off on the left-hand side, the south side. Is that where you see the new building going?
We have taken areas, and we're going to let the contractors and the engineers tell us where it needs to go.
Yeah, and then it has to go through zoning at Camden, and it hasn't done yet. My point in these questions is similar to Mr. Conell's, is when you came in here the first time and we had a detailed plan, is there a hurry to get this done in December, get our vote done in December, or would it be better to have a properly stood-up plan? Because we don't have one right now.
Yes, sir. We're ready to go. I will be honest with you, Chairman, and we do have some restraints on the state money. We have got to make so much progress on it also. By delaying this, like I said, I give you my word, this building's going to be done. It's going to be done as cost-effective as possible. And where I come from, a man's word's his word.
No one ever questioned you, Paul, and I hope the same can be said of me. The problem I have is the same problem I had before. The financials are not there, and I'd feel much better about this going forward, even though we have a motion to vote, if we had more information. I just don't feel comfortable committing public funds for a quarter of a million dollars when we don't have the plan in front of us. And that's plain and simple. And I don't want to make this personal. It's simply about the numbers for me right now. Okay. All right. Other comments?
Yes.
Yeah, other comments?
I think Mr. Napper has one, and then I have a question.
Thank you.
Just let me remind you that a man without compassion for his fellow man is a very poor sight.
I'm trying to understand what that means.
We'll talk about it after this meeting.
Yeah, go ahead.
So essentially, you've got a million dollars from the state, 250 committed from Kershaw County, 150 plus off the sale. So you've got 1.4 million of the 1.7, 1.8. So you've got a deficit somewhere between 300 and 400,000 dollars.
That's right.
Yes. And we have a reserve fund of 800,000, so it's covered.
And so you do have a reserve?
We, we.
That you're willing to put against?
Oh, yes, sir.
About 800,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's new news.
Well, that's why we're here.
825,000. Excuse me, I checked today because I figured that question would come up.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if you may?
Uh, go ahead.
Mr. Gardner just asked a question I wanted to ask, but I also want to state, in my motion, and I don't know how you guys are interpreting my motion, but it's my motion, it said fundraiser. It didn't give a dollar amount, okay? Number one, I was not here for the presentation of the Alpha Center. Check your records. So a lot of this stuff that y'all are holding accountable for, I wasn't in that discussion and didn't even give any input in it, because I was not here at that work session. I went and talked to Mr. Napper on my own later, as I always do when I miss meetings. I talked to Mr. Carpenter. I talked to whoever the presenter was at the work session to make sure that I'm caught up. But in this motion, and you've got it ready in your tablets, it has no dollar amount. It could be a dollar that I intended. I never gave a dollar amount, and I never told any of you a dollar amount. And I go back to my original statement. I understand about not having the plans. You've heard new information tonight on how it's going to get built without any fundraising money. They have the means to do it. You heard why it's time-sensitive? Where are their biggest holdup right now in making this go forward? And, you know, I've even asked Mr. Napper, and I'll ask him again, are you willing to come back before this body when you get everything approved by your board? Because there's no need to come to us with just plans that you hope to do something if they're not approved by your board.
Absolutely. I'll bring the whole plans to you with all the costs and everything. Mr. Arledge, let me apologize to you. I usually do meet with you one-on-one, and I didn't, but I thought you were getting the information, and that's my fault.
Other discussion?
I remembered what it was, Mr. Chairman. So I would love to be able to support the project. And as you remember, last time we sat down and I tried to scrutinize the data as best as I could and asked a whole bunch of questions, and y'all had a whole bunch of answers. But in particular, I remembered the condition, which was volunteered by you all, of the sale of the building as one of the, I guess, one of the factors, is for your formula being successful. And I remember sitting here, hopping on our GIS, and looking at what our actual assessment value was of the property, and it was, I don't have my notes with me, but it was like 300% or something higher for the potential sale value. And that was enough of a wrinkle for me to say, I don't think it's going to be successful because I don't think the property would sell for that amount to make the overall project work, and I wouldn't want to put taxpayer funds towards something that I can't see working on paper. So I just don't, I have even less detail tonight. And maybe you thought I was getting it from somewhere, you know, able to calculate and figure to see how it would work, but, you know, I'm sorry, I just can't support it tonight. I'd love to be able to support it in the future, if I can make sense of it.
And I would too. And I've heard words like "fair" and "compassion," and I've heard about responsibility of the money that's associated with handling taxpayer monies. No one has ever failed to, no one's ever called me a lack of compassion. If they have, they have not had the facts. I'd like to have the facts. And I'd like to, and I appeal to Mr. Tucker and others in this room, that we not have this meeting until we gave the responsible agency, the Alpha Center, an opportunity to come in here with their plan. We have less information now by a substantial number than we had the first time we voted. And for the same reasons, I would like to see if there would be a motion to delay this until they come in with architectural plans and a stood-up plan. Is there such a motion? There is not. Okay. Well, failing that, I can't support it. With that, yeah.
You and I had a conversation, I didn't expect you to support it. You and I had a conversation the night that you passed this budget, two hours before we passed it. You asked me to give this money back, that you could use it to balance your budget, and I tell you I would, and you told me then that you would put roadblocks in front of me to keep me from getting this money, and I feel that's what this is.
I'm sorry you feel that way. I know I didn't use that word.
Yes, sir, exactly did.
I don't think that's true, and if I did, I apologize.
I don't, a conversation like that, a man doesn't forget. I don't forget it.
I'm sorry you misremembered. Are there any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Tucker, go ahead.
This council has no control on any other government entity. What the city does for the Alpha Center is the city's business. Not one of us up here have a vote for the city. And I've said it in my conversation earlier, that I've spoke with the mayor, and she's one of five down there, but she's the mayor, so that tells me she has some pull. They are willing to rededicate whatever resources they have to the Alpha Center to make sure this project is a success. Now, that's all I have to go on. I don't ask the mayor for anything in writing, anything on contract. I don't ask city council of any of that. I go off what they tell me because they've always been true to me. And I don't know how this conversation got sideways with any of us up here, but I hope to God, and I pray to my God, that we're never deliberately throwing roadblocks in front of nobody's way to prove a point. Because when those days come, you don't need to be up here governing.
Other discussion? I think we're ready to go to a vote. We have the motion to remove the language, and Mr. Tucker has made it very clear that we would remove the restrictions and begin the clock on 1 July for new capital improvements for a period of two years for $250,000. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. We have Mr. Arledge, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Gardner, and Mr. Bozard. All those opposed signify by raising your hand. That's Mr. Burns and Mr. Connel. That's very good. And that is, it passes.
Mr. Jones abstained. Sorry.
And Mr. Jones, not voting, recused, abstained. Thank you, Mr. Napper.
Thank you, sir.
Well, we move now to the next item, which is council briefing, starting with Mr. Bozard.
No briefing.
Mr. Connel?
Yes, sir. We'll see what the results of the wrestling match are tonight. I look forward to tuning into that, and just would like the folks to know about the Elgin Catfish Stomp coming up December 1st at 10:00 a.m. in Elgin. They're going to have vendors along the way and some of the best catfish stew you've ever tasted.
That's true.
That's all I have.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of county council. Just a couple of remarks.
Danny, would you put my overhead projector up, please? Thank you. In August, I requested that the Kershaw County Economic Development Office provide correct information to council and Kershaw County citizens as to location and expansions of industries since 2009. After repeated inquiries from me, Kershaw County Economic Development Office changed its location and expansions of industries since 2009 to correctly delete 410 new jobs and $72 million investment that never happened. I still requested accurate information from the Kershaw County Economic Development Office as to investments and jobs. To this day, the Kershaw County Economic Development Office lists in 2010, as an industrial expansion, a confidential company which 40 jobs committed and $10 million investment, and a confidential company with 140 jobs committed and $10 million investment for a total of 180 confidential jobs in 2010 and $20 million confidential investment in 2010. Okay, folks, help me understand. How can job commitment and investment committed in 2010 be confidential in 2018? How can you hire confidential employees, one? Two. And how can you pay confidential taxes? And how can an announcement for jobs and investment in 2010 be a confidential company in 2018, as bragged about and promoted by the Kershaw County Economic Development Office? Members of council, Kershaw County Council deserves accurate information, and the citizens deserve accurate information. I want to ask you to look at the board, the overhead projector. All right, Danny, go to 2010 for me. Okay. I don't want to stick it in anybody's eye. Maybe y'all can hear me better. Okay, you see 2009, I didn't even mention that, but you see where you have confidential right here, 6.5 million, 15, that's a confidential in 2009, which I didn't even discuss tonight. But up here, 2010, you have confidential, 10 million, 40 jobs. Confidential, 10 million, 140 jobs. And that's my question. How can we have, who's paying the confidential taxes? Who's hiring the confidential employees? And that's the face of Kershaw County. All I ask is that we put correct information up there, and of course, if anybody can explain it tonight, I'm certainly all ears to listen to, but I've never, I just can't understand that. Mr. Chairman, members of council, bear with me one minute. I think that's all I've got. I want to thank you for your time. It's been a lot of fun. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Arledge?
Nothing to report, sir.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes, sir. Very briefly, just want to make sure that all of you are aware, and it'll probably come into the county here versus your regular address. I'm sitting on the committee to do the recognition of Mr. Fred R. Sheehan's name on CCTC, and that should be coming up. You should be receiving invitation sometime in December for a date in January. It has not been confirmed yet. Working on those plans. But please try to attend. I think it's going to be a great recognition and honor of Mr. Sheehan, who's done so much not only for this county, but also for the state. And so I want to give you heads up and just put you on alert for looking for that invite. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gardner?
No report.
Okay, on my side, we, next meeting is 11th of December, and I ask you all to consider the survey, which is showing great progress for Vision 2030, and we've already surpassed the numbers of surveys from last year, which shows a continuing commitment to Vision 2030 and also the tenants of all American county. With that, Mr. Carpenter?
Mr. Chairman, just one item for you tonight. Two of the recreation youth teams are in the state championship games.
Right.
The 9-10 football and the 11-12 football teams, they're both playing Rock Hill for the state championship.
Really? Good.
We should have a good football team in about five, six years at the high school level.
We need it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. That's my report.
Ah, Mr. DeBoz?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
We have now an executive session for consideration of terms of employment for the administrator. Mr. Tucker?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, if we may, I would like at this time to ask for an executive session to go in for terms of employment of the administrator, please, sir.
And returning?
Returning with a possible vote.
Very good. Very good.
And I would ask that we include the county administrator as well as the county attorney.
Very good. We have a motion to go into executive session for consideration of terms of employment of the administrator to return for a possible vote, and we would like to have the administrator and the legal counsel to attend. Can we have a second?
Second.
And Mr. Bozard, discussion. Seeing there is none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand, and we are moving into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, ask everybody to bring their package, please.
Executive session?
We have a second. From Mr. Connel, any discussion? No kind of discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand, and we are now back from executive session. Mr. Tucker, do you have a motion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, would like to make a motion that we increase our administrator's salary by 2.5% for the annual increase.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Bozard. Any discussion? Incredible performance over the past two years, justly deserved. Let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous. And we have a motion to adjourn.
No main.
Second.
We have a first from Mr. Bozard, and we have multiple seconds. I'll give it to Mr. Tucker.
Okay.
Any discussion? Seeing there is none, move to a vote, and we are adjourned.